Everyone could please rise. Jim Jolly will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The honorable Jim Jolly Councilmember will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. Good evening and welcome to the February 8th, 2021 study session of the Livonia City Council. This is a meeting that sets the agenda for the 1,915th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, February 22nd, 2021. And we have all members of the council with us this evening. I do not have any announcements. Does anyone from the council have any announcements that they would like to make to the council? Councilmember Toy, and you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've had some significant people pass away in our great city in the last few weeks. And I found it home for this little saying today that I'd like to share with everyone. It's, when we lose someone we love, we must learn not to live without them, but to live with the love they left behind. I thought that was very appropriate for Angie and Henry and all those loved ones that are being lost right now because of the virus and other reasons. So I think if we keep that in mind, we can reunite a lot of things that are going on. And God bless all of them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Toy. Does anyone else have any announcements they'd like to offer this evening? All right. Does anyone, would anyone in the council like to communicate? I'm sorry, would anyone in the audience like to communicate with the council on any item of their concern that is not on this evening's, that is not on this evening's agenda? I'm calling at this time for audience communication. This is an opportunity for anyone who's in the audience to communicate with the council on any item that is not on our agenda this evening. All right, I'm calling once, I'm calling twice. Final call for audience communication. All right, seeing none, we'll proceed with our meeting. This evening's meeting is a study meeting. There are no votes, there will be no votes taken. The councilmembers will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or resolution referring the item to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all items on this evening's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Monday, February 22nd, 2022, where they will officially be voted upon. And if you would like to participate in any of the items that are taken up this evening, simply, you can either, you can raise your hand on Zoom, or you can press star nine on your phone when the item is called. You will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be attributed to you properly in the minutes for the meeting. And we'll also let those in the Zoom audience and the councilmembers know who is speaking to them. And if you are, if you press star nine, when the item is called, when I'm, when we go to unmute, to unmute you, you use star six on your phone to unmute yourself. And with that, we will proceed with our, with our agenda this evening, beginning with new business, item number one. This is a request for a waiver use extension for a new use. This is for Melissa Wojnar, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that, Ray Craft, representative of the Lycox Law Firm on behalf of Xiaoping Hoob, and again, my apologies if I mispronounce that, regarding petition 2014-10-02-14 submitted by Elite Foot Spa LLC to operate a massage establishment on a property located on the northeast, on the southeast corner of Plymouth and Stark Roads. That's 34389 Plymouth Road in the northeast quarter of Section 33. And this is Council Resolution 373-14. And we have Ms. Wojnar Raycraft with us this evening. And it looks like we do, let me find the petitioner. There we go. Good evening, Ms. Raycraft. And please correct me on the pronunciation of your name.
Oh, you did just fine. I usually go by just Raycraft now. Back when I got buried a billion years ago, I thought it would be cool to hyphenate. Now it's just a pain.
All right, well, good evening, Ms. Raycraft.
Hi, so I'm not sure what you need from me on this. Our client is Elite Foot Spa. And the current owner of Elite Foot Spa is Edward Davis. And he would like to sell the spa to his longtime manager.
Okay.
He's already got, which is Ms. Hoob. And who's worked with him since they've been open for almost six years now.
Okay.
The resolution that was granted like six years ago, or five or six years ago, included a clause that any transfers of the waiver use had to be approved. So that's why we're here to have the transfer to the manager so that it's seamless.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Raycraft, appreciate that. Council, do you have questions? Councilmember Toy. You're muted.
Yep, thank you so much. You know, I've received a couple of communications on this, and I sent them to most of you, if not all of you, in regards to one person from our city contacting me. If I may, Madam Chair, there were some questions that Ms. Hoob, I believe is how you pronounce it, I'm not sure, H-O-O-B?
I think that's what Ms. Raycraft indicated is Ms. Hoob.
Hoob, okay, thank you. Is not listed as an owner of this business on the Michigan Department of Licensing form. It shows the owner as Edward Davis. I think perhaps she just explained that to us, but I'd like to get her reaction. And I have a couple of their questions as well, if I may, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
Perhaps?
Ms. Raycraft?
I can't tell if I'm still muted or not, I'm sorry.
You're not?
Okay, so the spa's not sold to Ms. Hoob yet. That Edward Davis is still the owner of the spa. And we're in the process of putting together purchasing paperwork. And one of the steps on that, though, would the transfer be approved as part of the purchase? And if she's not currently an owner, she will be an owner if she purchases the spa.
Madam Chair, if I may continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, I don't, I don't want to get into anything overly personal here, ma'am, but since you're representing them, I probably need to ask you a couple more questions that were written to me that a few other people have been concerned with. And one being that they operated a massage business in Columbus, Indiana, and had some issues in 2012. Are you familiar with any of that?
I am not.
Okay. It involves several things as related to me in this communication. And there was a court order on that as well. And they were actually charged as well on that. So you may want to look into that. And then they, they were also banned from operating in that county as of, as of several years back, it looks like, for the information I have. And then within the last couple of years, it looked like that they had then moved to Michigan and, you know, that they now want to obtain a Michigan massage license to operate Elite Foot Spa. Okay, and it shows that she, or Mr. Hoob, I should say, is living in Indiana, Indiana, and Mrs. is in Washington State, where they lived before moving to Indiana. So it's, you know, there's, there's some explaining here because as we look at some of the kind of issues with some of these businesses, there can be some interesting things that go on in some of these areas, even though they're licensed and they operate many in good faith, many with some issues. And I know when we try and check people's backgrounds, human trafficking becomes a charge that was also cited in this communication I have and that I also forwarded to the councilmembers. So I guess I should have also sent it to the city attorney, which I will do as well. But if you could answer any of those questions, I don't want to, I'm not trying to accuse anyone, but I have a lot of information in this document that I don't want to share to, you know, cast dispersions on them, but I certainly, we need some answers, I guess. At least this councilperson does.
Councilmember Toy?
Yeah.
Are those just in Indiana or any of those concerns in Michigan? Because Elite House Spa has been at that location for almost six years. And Ms. Hoob's been a licensed massage therapist for just as long. And she does not have any complaints on her massage license with the state of Michigan, which you can look at that online. And I did look at that, and she hasn't had any published complaints in Michigan. I can't speak to what may have happened in Indiana because I didn't look in Indiana. I just know what's happened over the last six years at the Elite House Spa that's here. I do know that, I don't believe that Ms. Hoob and Mr. Hoob are together anymore, which would explain my, she's here and he's whatever state that you said she was in, he was in. But I also don't have the document in front of me that you have in front of you.
And I'm quoting out of the document I do have that this individual and others have also sent in their concerns. So no, I don't have anything as it relates to the state of Michigan, but I do, I am concerned with the character of individuals that want to operate, whether it's in our state, in our county, in our city, wherever, that may have some very questionable practices. Okay, that's kind of where I'm coming from on it. So I want to look into that for your buyer as we move forward.
Okay. I just, I would just say that as they've been there for the last six years in that location, none of that's come to light to the city of Livonia or the police department or the state of Michigan. If anybody else has any questions, I'd be happy to answer what I can answer.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Barr.
So my question for the attorney, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, this has been a foot massage place for the last six, seven years since 2014, and they're now adding massage services, is that right?
Um, no, Councilmember Barr, that's not correct. They've been a foot massage place and a massage therapy place. There isn't any new services being added at this time. All we're doing is asking for the waiver use that they've had for the last six years to be transferred from Edward Davis to Ms. Hoob. So they've already been established as a massage therapy place and a foot reflexology place for six years in this location. All we want to do is when you transfer ownership, this waiver use has to get transferred as well, so not adding anything new.
Okay, and the prospective owner has been there that whole time?
Yes.
I have a question for Planning Director Mark Teramina, if I may. Mark, just looking at the floor plan for this, we obviously deal with massage establishments from time to time, but typically I thought we required, we generally have them have a pretty open floor plan. I'm surprised by how much this is broken up. It was approved prior to my time on council, so I don't, although I, I guess I would have been on planning commission, so it probably did come before me. I don't remember this. The, is that usual to have a floor plan like that for what we approve here?
It really depends on the services being offered. I think this is discussed in nearly every instance where we have a massage establishment. And depending on the need for privacy, you know, some are open, some have, you know, semi-enclosed rooms for purposes of full-body massages and that sort of thing. So it's not, it's a combination. I mean, again, the commission and, and council typically ask these questions during the review process. I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that those questions were asked back in 2014. I have the minute here, and I, I'm guessing that those questions were asked. And I might be able to provide a little more information to you if you give me a few minutes.
Okay. And Ms. Raycraft, so just, just to reiterate again, you don't, you don't have any knowledge of anything that happened with this prospective owner prior to 2014?
I do not.
Okay.
No, I only looked at her Michigan history. I didn't look at anything in Indiana.
I did some independent research on it. It doesn't take too much searching to find publicly available information about some things that are pretty concerning on this. And it's, it's hard for me to look past that. So I'm gonna offer denying on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. If I could ask council a question real quick. Ms. Raycraft, that is. Can you explain the terms of the sale, just in terms of, is it an immediate sale of the full capital of the company? Or is it spread out over a period of years where the purchase price will be paid? How quickly will Mr. Davis be leaving any relationship with this business?
We're still on, hang on one second, I'm on the city council meeting. The terms of the purchase haven't been solidified yet. We're at the very beginning. So I'm not sure if it's going to be lump sum from Ms. Hoob yet or spread out yet. One of the first steps I was taking was to, to look into this transfer first. So they still have to work out their purchase terms.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Just a quick follow-up to my denying. I, I just want to point out, I purposely did not put it on consent because I, I don't think we're going to get any answers to the questions that I had hoped to ask tonight, just based on the fact that the, that Ms. Raycraft doesn't seem to be familiar with anything prior to what happened in Michigan. So, you know, if there were more information to come to light over the next couple of weeks that can alleviate the concerns on this, that's why I'm not offering it for consent. But at this point, I have too many concerns about this to approve it. I just want to explain that.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Mark, did you have?
Just briefly, looking at the minutes from, the planning commission minutes, that is, from 2014, it would appear that, the question was asked about the rooms. The response by Mr. Davis at the time was that the space, those rooms were pre-existing. Apparently, this was a chiropractic office, and they didn't want to eliminate those rooms. And the type of massage being conducted or services then was, it looks like it was pretty much limited to reflexology. So foot massage was going to be the primary service, it would appear. So anyway, I just thought I'd add that information to Mr. Barr's question.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In light of the situation and without getting too deep dive into this at the moment, and as has been mentioned, perhaps obtaining some more information for both the petitioner and whoever. Perhaps, I'm gonna offer as well, for options that evening, a committee of the whole, just in case you want to get into anything a little bit deeper and ask for some reports and things like that, if we may. And through the state, it may take a few minutes. So I'll offer that as well, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Toy?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, what was at the beginning of that?
To offer it to, or to committee of the whole.
Okay. All right, so. Resolution offered, and we have a referral to committee of the whole resolution offered. Anyone else? Would anyone from the audience like to, like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none. So Ms. Raycraft, you understand that we have a denying resolution offered and a resolution referring to committee of the whole that will come up on the, on the regular meeting of Monday, February 22nd. So you will need to be present at that meeting. And I guess I'd suggest if there's any additional information that you'd like to communicate to the, to the council, that you could get in touch with the council office and have any information shared with the council prior to that meeting. And it looks like Mr. Davis would like to address the council. Mr. Davis, are you able to? There we go. Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to talk to you guys a minute. I know I have council here. She's basically been representing me. I have other businesses that, that I'm working with, that I own. I just want to explain a couple of things, maybe. And maybe this isn't the time, I'm not sure, but we've owned, I've owned Elite Foot Spa for six years. And Ms. Hoob has worked for me for the six years. She did prior have some, she tried to open up her own establishment in Indiana. She was not aware of how taxes get paid and how to do bookkeeping and so on and so forth. So she did have some issues there with the tax thing. So they basically shut her down. They did, I guess, basically file whatever it is, you know, trouble for her. Since then, I have helped her. We've gotten it taken off of her records. She has no record of, of any misdoing. It was basically over a tax thing. Since then, I've basically worked with her, teaching her the laws and how to run a business and that kind of thing. So she doesn't run it currently, everything. I do a lot of it, but she does understand quite a bit of things now. So she's much more rounded in being able to take over this business, sell this business to her. I personally am working on my retirement. This is one business that I, I don't need or want anymore. The other one I'll be removing myself to down the, down in a year or so. So this business will be all her. But I have pretty good confidence that she would be able to run this business spite of the things that you guys probably have researched and seen. So I just wanted to say that. I don't know, I might be, with my council, she might be mad at me for saying things. But I want to explain that this is how this was all about. So it's really, she's not been in any trouble, but she didn't understand the US laws and how to run a business.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Sure.
Vice President Barr?
Sorry, I didn't cut in front of anybody, did I? I didn't raise my hand electronic. Okay, good, sorry. Mr. Davis, I appreciate you speaking tonight. And as you were talking, I've been looking back. I, I have to, I have a little bit of embarrassment, I have to confess. I almost always read all the minutes that are provided to us on an item. And I'll be honest, this one, I spent so much time looking into some of the concerns and researching that myself that I failed to do that. But as you were talking, I was going back and looking. And I actually, I actually do remember this coming before us on planning commission. And I think I remember you as well. Can you remind me, how did you, how did you first come in contact with Ms. Hoob? Or how did she find you, you know, for this arrangement back in 2014?
Am I still on mute?
No, you're not. You'll remain, Mr. Davis, you'll remain unmuted for the remainder of this item.
Okay. I, I met her, I actually met her in a, in a CBS store she was trying to locate. I forget now what. I helped her find it, I met her. I had previously went through a divorce and basically I just met her and, and we got, you know, I ended up talking with her and so on and so forth. First I became friends with her for a while. And then I decided that I wanted to venture into foot reflexology in the state of Michigan because they didn't have any, anything like that. And basically, she had told me that, you know, she had worked in different places and so on and so forth. So yeah, it was just one of those kinds of things, so.
So the main reason I ask, and I think, and I don't need to, it's not because I'm wanting to delve into it any more than I need to, but I, the main reason I ask is you did not have prior experience with a foot spa like this prior to this, right? This is the first of this type of business that you've had?
No, sir, you're correct.
Okay, so, and, and you entered into this business because you knew her and knew she had expertise in that area? And so that's what brought you into this?
I entered into, I entered into this business because my other company, I travel a lot. So I go to California considerably amount of times. And because traveling a lot, they have some, in different states, they had some great foot places where you really get some good relief. And I believed 100% in it because I experienced it. And when I got back to Michigan, there's nowhere you could go to get this. So I thought this would be a really good business to, to have for, to help people out. And it has been a very good business for that.
Is, is there a need for your business model to have all the separate rooms that are currently there now? I know, I know, back seven years ago, you just didn't want to go to the expense, I don't think of removing them because of, they were there previously, but.
So basically, there's only two, there's only two massage rooms. They were existing, we did not tear them down. We only have two massage rooms. The rest of all the rooms are wide open. In the last year, we did make a couples massage room so that we could allow couples for Valentine's Day and so on and so forth. So there's, there's only really three rooms that do, that can do oil massage. And everything else is open.
Okay.
90% of the building, that, that space is open.
How many, how many employees do you have doing the massages?
Right, right, right now, I only have two. But I'm, I'm actually gonna close for a couple of weeks because I just have too many things going on. And I'm trying to get this thing approved or see if we can or what we're gonna do.
You say, you say right now you only have two. Is that due to COVID? And when you're running full strength, how many, how many do you have?
Well, well, I, I've had up to four.
Okay, so, and one of those is, is Ms. Hoob, right? And then three additional ones?
Correct.
Okay, and every one of them is licensed?
No, sir. So under foot massage, you don't have to be licensed.
Okay.
So anybody that does body massage is licensed.
How many in addition to Ms. Hoob are licensed to do the body massage?
I've always had two.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
All right, Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Can you briefly explain what your participation was in terms of managing this? Were you on site on a regular basis, or were you kind of a?
Oh, sir.
Partner on the business end, you know, who was kind of doing the books and that sort of stuff?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's one of the other, beyond, besides retiring, I feel that I, I'm not able to spend the amount of time that is required to be on site, because my other business has taken off so, so good. So I don't have the time to spend. Through the years, I've tried to be there as much as possible, but I can be honest with you, I'm not there as much as I should be.
Okay, so, over the course of the last six years, on a typical week, would you say that you spent, you know, 10 to 20 hours there a week, or 20 or more hours there a week?
Less than 20, maybe 10, maybe 10 hours a week.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I.
All right, anyone else?
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
There's still things to sort through on this, but as I, as I've cleaned out the cobwebs of what we heard seven years ago in this game before us, and listened to them tonight, I, I still have concerns, but I'll, I'll offer an approving as well as the denying for us to consider in two weeks.
All right, so, Mr. Davis and Ms. Raycraft, you've now heard that we have an approving resolution, a denying resolution, and a resolution referring this to Committee of the Whole. So again, we request you to join us at the regular council meeting, which is, which will be Monday night, February 22nd at 7:00 PM. And if there's any additional information that you would like to get into council's hands prior to that meeting, please contact the council office. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item number two, is the reappointment of Linda Schele to LaVonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire on November 24th, 2023. Good evening, Ms. Schele, and is, do we have someone from the, from the mayor's office who wanted to speak to this issue? Let's see, well, apparently, we don't have anyone from the mayor's office who wishes to speak to this, which is a little bit unusual, but good evening, Ms. Schele.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me this evening. It's my honor to again be chosen to serve on the Brownfield Authority, and I look forward to it.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr, and then Jim Jolly has his hand up, too.
I was just gonna offer an approving for consent. If there's no objection, this one's easy.
All right, Councilmember Jolly, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, ma'am.
All right, so we have, we have approving for consent offered for the reappointment of Linda Schele to LaVonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And of course, Ms. Schele, I referred you as Ms. Schele, you're really, as we all know, Treasurer Schele and former Councilmember Schele, and Board of Education also, correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. A person who's worn many hats of service in our community. So if there's nothing else, then we'll put that on consent, and you may be asked to see us for other reasons, Treasurer, but you won't have to come back and see us for this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And item number three is the reappointment of Jack Anger Breton, the Honorable Jack Anger Breton to LaVonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This too comes from, to us from the Office of the Mayor, three-year term, which will expire on November 24th, 2020, 2023. And I, I guess we didn't have anyone from the mayor's office with us this evening, so at this time, it's my pleasure and privilege to introduce the Honorable Jack Anger Breton, our former mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Oh, let's see. Mayor there? Mayor was there? All right, oh, there's the mayor. All right, right in front of me. Anyway, good evening, former Mayor Anger Breton. Counsel? Yes, Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It would be my pleasure to offer an approving resolution for the reappointment of former Mayor Jack Anger.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam President.
Yes.
I would like to just take a few moments, and I really mean it'll just be a few moments, to thank the mayor for the reappointment opportunity, the recommendation, and for the council giving that recommendation consideration. Madam President, I would ask for you to grant me a point of personal privilege for the purpose of me directing a brief comment through the chair to Councilmember Donavick.
Yes.
May I proceed? Councilman Donavick.
I want to make sure we still had him. Go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm looking right at him.
I am, too.
But I can see him. Councilman Donavick, as a long-term city official and as a US Air Force veteran, I want to thank you for your service to our community and to our nation. And I hope that when you return to the city, that I will have the opportunity to thank you in person. And Madam President, finally, I'd like to commend you and all of your colleagues for continuing to conduct important business via Zoom during these very difficult times. I know, from my own personal experience, how difficult it is to conduct serious business virtually, and you are all to be amended for doing a really great job. And Madam President, I yield back.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And I, I think it is the, I know I don't like to speak for council, but I think it is the honor and the privilege of, of everyone in the city council to have this opportunity to reappoint you. And as we were naming off positions that Linda Schele has held, there are many you have held, many, many that you have held as well. And certainly, mayor, city council president, planning commissioner, and have served our community in many, many other ways, some visible and some completely invisible by your design, because as, as I remarked, there's nothing about Jack Anger Breton that is a show horse. So we want to thank you for, for your service, and it's just a, I personally enjoy being able to be part of re welcoming you back to planning, and you do an extraordinary job as the chair, and thank you. It's a lot of work. It's a commission that entails a lot of work and a lot of research and a lot of understanding, a lot of details. And the commission is in excellent hands under your leadership and with the very capable commissioners we have, including Treasurer Schele and Mr. Van Detten, who we're about, to whose appointment we're about to reconsider. Thank you so much, former Mayor Anger Breton.
Thank you.
All right, and you do not need to return on February 22nd for this, but you're always welcome.
Okay, I, I want to return to find the outcome of item number one.
All right, well, we'll look forward to having you back within two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you. Item number four is the reappointment of Stephen Van Detten to the LaVonia Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. This too comes from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term, which will expire November 24th, 2023. And let's see if we have that with us. Once you got it in the wrong column. Let's see. I don't know if, Casey, if you can help me find Mr. Van Detten if he's there. Anyway, counsel, while we're looking to see if Mr. Van Detten is on the, on the call. Councilmember Toy, did you?
Well, right ahead. So moved, Madam Chair.
Did, did you want to offer an approving resolution?
Yes, yes, please.
All right.
On consent, if that's okay with everyone.
Are there any objections to placing Mr. Van Detten's reappointment on consent? Seeing none, we'll, we will put it on consent. There, you know, we do typically, and all, and not typically, but we do send notification to appointees or reappointees asking to attend the meeting, but we will put that on consent. Item number five is a request for authorization to purchase five power loader ambulance cot loading systems. This comes to us from LaVonia Fire Department to replace equipment that has exceeded the life expectancy and improve worker and patient safety from budgeted funds. Good evening, Chief Hebner.
Good evening, Madam President and fellow council members. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Tonight, I'm here to request a, an approving resolution to purchase five new stretchers from Stryker Corporation. These are the same style stretchers that are currently in use. They are used on frontline equipments on a daily basis. They provide a increased level of safety to our firefighters by reducing injuries, increase safety for patients during transport, and ensure a safe overall transport experience with our community. Currently, the life expectancy per the manufacturer on this equipment is about seven years, and the five stretchers that we are looking to replace average 10 and a half years in daily service. So this is an item that we budgeted for the 2021 capital outlay, and I'm requesting permission with that purchase.
Councilmember Toy?
Thank you. If I may ask a chief of question, Madam Chair. Chief, is Stryker the only source on this particular item?
For the system that?
I know they're very popular in the health field.
Yes, so this would be a sole source purchase. This is the, the product that we currently use, and they are compatible with our loading device system that is mounted in the floor of the ambulance. And these are the only stretchers that can be utilized with that current equipment that's in our vehicles.
Okay, that's what I wondered. So there is no other stretchers that would be able to bid on this, because Stryker would be the only one that could fit that particular, those particular vehicles, right?
That's correct, with the overall accompaniment of our loading system and current equipment, yes.
Certainly, okay. Madam Chair, everything looks in order, even though it's a sole source, and you heard the reasons why. So I will offer an approving. And that's it. Thank you.
Approving for consent, is that correct, Councilmember Toy?
Yeah, if you want consent, that's fine, yes.
All right, any objections to that? Seeing none, we'll move on with item number five. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Is a request for approval of commitment resolution for the City of LaVonia to join ARPs, also known as the American Associates and Retired People, Persons. I don't know if they still spell that out, or if they're officially ARPs. Age Friendly Communities Network, this comes to us from the Housing Commission as part of LaVonia's five-year consolidated plan to promote successful aging and improve the quality of life of all residents. Good evening, Ms. Isaacson.
I'm just here to request approval via LaVonia to commit to include joining the ARPs, age-friendly communities, along with, as the Community Development Office begins its work on its five-year consolidated, the goal of this is to promote successful aging in place and to improve the quality of life for all the residents. ARP has identified eight domains of livability. Those eight domains include housing, transportation, parks, recreation, interaction, social participation, inclusion. And as we begin our process, we've, I already recognized that we're already to promote livability. One of those items is under community development. We've been creating our park paths to be more age-friendly or ADA compliant. So this is some of those items that we're kind of looking at as we're going over and thinking five years out into the future. Areas are expanding our housing. I apologize, I'm having some technical issues. So we've already prepared our letter to submit. We're currently working on our application.
Excuse me, Brandy, do you think you could try reconnecting? Because it is, we have so much static, it's, it is difficult to hear you, at least it's difficult for me.
I can try now.
Okay, thank you. Jim, while Brandy's reconnecting, did you have, was your question for Brandy?
I didn't so much have a question. I wanted to offer an approving for consent. I, I think we understood the basis of what she was explaining in the materials in the packet, so that was my intention.
All right. All right, I think, let's see, I think Brandy's back.
I'm still having issues.
All right, well, Mr. Jolly has asked for an approving resolution, council, just a minute, Councilmember Toy, I get right, Chief, Mr. Jolly has offered, Councilmember Jolly has offered approving resolution for consent. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just if I may ask Brandy, just a couple of questions. Brandy, I know you're, you know, in charge of our housing and everything, but as you do this plan, am I under the assumption that some of that plan may include or be talked about some of our in-home seniors as well? No, maybe the static one. Okay, maybe we could save that question for another time, Madam Chair.
Well, I, I'd like to ask that this be placed on the regular agenda. We're having some technical issues hearing from Ms. Isaacson tonight. And also, I, I mean, it is, it is, there cannot be a downside to LaVonia engaging and working with ARP, but I would just like to understand before the next meeting, a little bit more about our five-year consolidated plan. And we've had some issues come up about some things like Silver Sneakers membership at the, at our Kirksey Recreation Center, a few other things, that I'd just like to look at the, everything we're doing. And so I'd like to ask that this be, that this will be placed on the regular not the consent. Councilmember Jolly?
I, I think my hand was never, I never took it down.
Okay, I, I couldn't, I couldn't tell if it had been down. All right.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
First of all, I apologize. For some reason, I do not have my raise hand button tonight, and so I got it done this way. I apologize. But I'm just gonna say, since we, although Brandy just came back, maybe we could try it again. I did have a couple of questions for.
All right, let's see, Brandy?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds better.
It does sound better, I think.
I don't know if you heard that I had asked that this be put on the, on the regular, not the consent. And I think Vice President Barr has a few questions that he wanted to ask.
Okay.
Brandy, thanks for being with us tonight. Is there, well, I'm gonna make a statement based on what I read, but I just want to confirm it. There's no cost to the city for getting this declaration?
No cost.
Okay.
No cost.
Are there any obligations for the city as part of this?
Our obligation is to make sure that we do include citizen participation when we're working on plan development.
Okay, so what is, how will, I'm not necessarily against it, I'm just trying to understand what the benefit for the city is in, in getting this designation. How does this change what we do anyway?
It really doesn't. We're already hitting the key. Um, it really doesn't. We're already hitting the key points.
Right.
What it is is just really putting it out there that we are doing this. Some of the other communities, Novi has committed as well as Southfield and Lansing. Brought to us about a year ago, we were working on some social isolation projects and discovered that this was basically a goal that we could work towards, but in really looking at the eight domains of livability, we recognized that we actually are already doing this. So as part of doing our five-year consolidated plan with Community Development, we thought that we would tie it in and, um, make sure that when we are doing our citizen participation, that we are getting the whole community, not just, um, working on parks or working with families, that we are identifying the needs of seniors and making sure that they are included.
Okay, I appreciate you saying that and you, you hit the nail on the head with what my question was. It's just as, as I read through the packet so much what was being said in there, I thought, not only does Livonia do this, I feel like Livonia does quite a bit of this exceptionally well, and so I was just trying to understand what we were pursuing this, but I, I, I see what you're saying now. It's almost like a certification type thing just to get the recognition for it. So.
Absolutely.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilmember Toy.
Is it okay to go back to my question that I had when we had technical difficulty?
Uh, yeah, it sounded like maybe we were having them again, but why don't we go, go ahead and let's see.
Okay, just real quick, Brandy, um, I, I had asked when you kind of had your buzzing going on, um, was, um, thi- this will apply as well to residents that we have at home, seniors at home, will we, they be considered as well, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, because, you know, there's so much that goes on anymore. I know you guys do a wonderful job with the housing and such, but, um, I'm really concerned about a lot of folks, even in my neighborhood, that either live alone and are getting older, need ramps, need help, you know what I'm saying? Um, just, just interesting stuff going on as we age, age.
Well, this is one of those topics where when we're looking at our community.
I think, I, I don't, I, I hate to stifle conversation, but I think that, that the extent of the technical difficulties we're having, um, that we, Brandy, if you don't mind, maybe coming to the regular meeting and explaining and addressing, uh, Councilmember Toy's, uh, comments and appreciate your willingness to do it tonight, but the static is making it very difficult to hear.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. So we have an approving on the regular agenda of February twenty-second. Thank you very much, Brandy. Have a good evening. All right, item number seven is a request for authorization to contract for P R V pressure-reducing valve replacement. This comes to us from the Department of Public Works to facilitate the project of installing a PAT, a P A T, um, at Eight Mile and Newburgh, P R V four, in the amount of thirty thousand seven hundred dollars. This is Council Resolution, Resolution three sixty-five dash sixteen from the unexpended fund balance. Uh, let's see, it looks like we have, uh, is that Mr., let's see, who's with us? Uh, good evening, Livonia D P W.
Good evening.
Can you hear me, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, this is Jacob Rushlow. I apologize. I forgot to switch my name over from hosting a meeting.
Oh, wow.
Um, yeah, so this item, uh, before you is, um, about authorization to contract for a P R V replacement. Apologize for the typo in your agenda. That is a, a P R V that we're looking to replace. So a little background on the item. The Great Lakes Water Authority is planning the replacement of a sixteen-inch wholesale water meter between the Great Lakes Water, the G L W A system and the city's system. Um, that meter connection is known as L V twelve. This is located at the intersection of Eight Mile Road and Newburgh Road. This m- meter connection is, um, the city's largest water source, providing anywhere from forty percent to eighty percent of our flow, depending on seasonal demands in the system from G L W A. To prepare for this type of a meter replacement, we worked with G L W A to perform what's known as a trial shutdown of the connection. During that trial shutdown, we discovered that the city's sixteen-inch pressure, pressure reducing valve, the P R V, uh, which resides inside that meter vault, is in need of replacement. Per our water contract with G L W A, the city is responsible for operation and maintenance of certain components in that meter vault downstream of the meter, including this, this valve, um, a shut-off valve and piping. There is a schematic that was, uh, included in your packet as well, um, if you have any questions on that. So in order to proceed with this P R V replacement project, we recommend that council pass a, a resolution to authorize the appropriation not to exceed thirty thousand seven hundred dollars, um, from the unexpended fund balance of the water and sewer fund and authorize payment to DeAngelo Brothers for labor and materials necessary to complete the work as described. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, I'll go first to Councilmember Jolly and then Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, so I want to offer an approving for consent. Uh, the thing that's notable here, and maybe Mr. Rushlow could give us some more details here, this is the same pump house where a malfunction caused a great portion of the city to lose water for about three or four days. Is that correct?
This is, uh, this is, if, are you referring to what happened back in, um, two thousand seventeen?
I think, uh, well, it's twenty sixteen, I think.
So, so that was, um, that was a different connection. So that one is, um, near I ninety-six, uh, Schoolcraft and Stark Road. Um, this, this location up at Newburgh and Eight Mile, um, is in a higher.
Two different things.
Yeah, maybe two different ones, but.
Yeah, I think this is, this is the place where we had an issue that caused us not to have water for three or four days. Um, i- it's important to take care of these things when they come up. Uh, that's why I'll approve this and, uh, look forward to having it done. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Jolly. Uh, Councilmember McCullough.
Madam President, um, through the chair to Mr. Rushlow. I, just a quick question. Obviously, we see this. This is a no-brainer. I'll be supporting, obviously, what Councilmember Jolly, uh, just, uh, made the resolution for. The question that I have is, obviously, there's more P R Vs around the city. Um, do we have any kind of a preventative maintenance program that, uh, we do regularly to avoid these kinds of situations?
We do, yeah. So there's a few things that, that we routinely do and checking our pressure-reducing valves. Uh, like you said, there are a number of them throughout the city. Um, you know, it involves going down into those vaults, um, making sure the valve is being exercised properly, it's working properly, checking pressure gauges. Um, the preventive maintenance includes changing out, um, gaskets and things and, and pilot valves to make sure that things are working properly. Um, that gets done every couple of years. Uh, usually you get about two years out of those, out of those gaskets before they need to be switched. Um, some of these valves are pretty old, uh, put in in the sixties and seventies. So this one in particular, I think, was nineteen seventy-four, was when it was originally installed. So it's, um, served its life well and ti- time to replace it with a new one.
Thank you. All right, anything else, uh, Mr. McCullough?
Nope, that's all. Thanks, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Um, anyone else? All right, we have an approving offered on consent, correct, uh? Correct, Mr. Jolly? All right, um, thank you, Jacob, and I think we have, uh, one more item with you. Uh, a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Great Lakes Water Authority and the City of Livonia. This comes to us also from the Department of Public Works for an, for improvements affecting westbound Schoolcraft Road from Melvin Street to Middlebelt Road in a Mount Natchixee, six hundred three thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents from budgeted funds.
Yes, thank you again, um, Madam Chair, Jacob Rushlow, Superintendent of Public Works. So this is a intergovernmental agreement that would be between, obviously, the city and, in this case, the Great Lakes Water Authority. Um, so the G L W A has been working to install a new forty-eight-inch diameter water transmission main on the westbound lanes of Schoolcraft Road. Um, that project started back in the summer here of two thousand and twenty. Um, the starting point was near the intersection of Melvin Street, which is just to the west of Middlebelt Road. Um, and the contractor, when they started to install that pipe, they really experienced a lot of challenges along the route, getting their main installed. Um, they, they only made it a very short distance. Um, the plan for them was to put it in this first year about a mi- just over a mile of pipe. Um, they put in less than eight hundred, eight hundred feet of pipe in the season. So many, many challenges along the way. A couple to note here and why we're having this discussion. So during the pipe installation, uh, the large water main pipe, the contractor had, um, damaged and severed, uh, a Livonia resident's sewer service lateral. Two other sewer service laterals were also damaged, um, to homes on the north side of Schoolcraft Road. Um, temporary repairs were, were made, but were really inadequate for long-term service to those homes. So at that time, the city had to mobilize our emergency services contractor to install a new ten-inch diameter sewer to create a permanent solution for sewer service to those three residences, um, and, and connect that back into an existing sewer to get them serviced. Uh, essentially, in that case, the, this large diameter water main ended up being in, in the way of the sewer lines and we had to do some rerouting, which luckily we were able to do and maintain service. Um, additionally, the, uh, a subcontractor to the prime contractor was performing a, what's known as a jack-and-bore pipe installation operation underneath Middlebelt Road, where they, where they basically, um, bore a pipe under the road without having to open cut the roadway. So during that operation, they damaged, um, one of our city thirty-six-inch sewer mains. A temporary patch was made, but a permanent long-term pipe replacement is necessary to ensure that, um, that pipe operates adequately underneath Middlebelt Road. So as the project continued, um, getting close to the end of the two thousand and twenty construction season, um, it became abundantly clear through much coordination with the city and G L W A that their contractor would not be able to complete the necessary work in order to safely open the road closures that had been ongoing on westbound Schoolcraft, as well as the westbound on-ramp to I ninety-six. Um, at that time, the department again mobilized, uh, emergency services with our paving contractor to install a temporary hot-mix asphalt, H M A, road surface, um, to the road, to the cross-section necessary to get us through these winter months and potentially through this next year as the G L W A project continues. Ultimately, we call that a, it's a temporary, um, asphalt patch because the permanent placement later through the contract with G L W A will be a new concrete, uh, road surface there so that, that asphalt will eventually come out. So summarizing those three occurrences that had happened on this project and how the city had assisted G L W A through, through this project, this, um, intergovernmental agreement between us and us, the city and G L W A will define the work items that were completed by the city's contracted forces, the costs for those items, and terms for reimbursement by G L W A to the city. Um, it's our recommendation that the city council authorize payment to the contractors for the services performed, um, in the amount of six hundred and three thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-nine cents, and pass a resolution approving the I G A with Great Lakes Water Authority for reimbursement to the city for those costs. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Council. Uh, Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, through the chair, Mr. Rushlow, if you don't mind, just out of curiosity, when a contractor, and I understand through construction, things happen, and no single project is gonna be perfect, but when a contractor does make a mistake and then there are large, um, dollar amounts that come with these mistakes, are we reimbursed by the contractor through, through the contract? I mean, are there some kind of clauses there that, that do cause damages that we don't have to pay them the full agreed-upon money that we probably agreed on, or how, how does that sort of work?
Yeah, great question. So in this case, the contractor is working not for the city, but for Great Lakes Water Authority, um, installing that large diameter transmission main for water system. So it's their responsibility as the contractor to, you know, safely put the pipe in the ground, not disturb other utilities. When there is a disruption or, or, or damage of other utilities, they are responsible for those costs. Ultimately, you know, the Great Lakes Water Authority and the contractor are responsible for those costs, which is why we've, you know, come before you with a, with a request to approve this I G A so we can, um, pay our contractor to do repair work and then get reimbursed by the authority. So in the prime reason that we used our contractor, especially on the sewer services, um, was, you know, for most of the repairs and the work that we do, um, in the city, we're using forces that we have contracted with contractors that we know, contractors that we've used and vetted through, um, references or have, you know, own past work experiences, um, and, and contractors that we trust and know are gonna perform the job the way we want it to be done on our system. So that's why in these two cases on the sewer system, uh, we used our own emergency contractor to make those repairs, knowing that they would get it done quickly, get it done right, and get, um, the, that system back operating, uh, quickly and get that service back to our residences.
Thank you, Mr. Rushlow, for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, um, Don, Dan, Don Rorf has his hands up, has his hand up. Would you like me to go to him or would you like to ask your question first?
No, you can go to him. That's fine.
Mr. Rorf?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Council, Don Rorf, D P W Director. Um, as Mr. Rushlow stated, um, this has been a, uh, a finicky intersection, to say the least, through the last few months out there, but the, um, the real reason that we are out there doing, in addition to what Jacob was saying, is that, um, as we moved along through this summer process, we realized that we wanted to make sure that we had a contractor onboard that we were comfortable with, that we're going to make, be making these long-term repairs to our system. The, um, the portion of this request tonight, that is the road portion, uh, G L W A actually reached out to us and asked if we could ha- actually help out because, uh, the contractor was located within our city to come in and do the, the asphalt and the things that we needed to do, and the pricing that they were starting to get from the contractor and the subcontractor out there, uh, was starting to get really, really crazy and out of hand. So, um, obviously, knowing that, uh, we have fine contractors that, uh, work within our city limits, they reached out to us and, and did that. And again, um, all of this is, is one hundred percent reimbursable, and I just wanted to make sure that, you know, in addition to what, uh, Mr. Rushlow said, that I added that in there too. We think it's important that we know who's working on our system and what kind of quality work we're gonna get with that.
Thank you, uh, Don. Um, Councilmember White.
I'm prepared to offer a resolution approving, and I already asked that this be put on consent. Um, I think this is a, a good example of great cooperation between the city and G W L A and, um, where we can work together like this. I think it's a good thing, so, um, I would offer approving. Thank you.
All right, any objections to placing it on consent? Seeing none, I don't see anyone else from the audience that would like to address this, uh, this issue? All right, so with that, we, thank you, uh, Jacob. Thank you, Don. Jacob, you may now go and, uh, get your birthday celebration, uh, a few hours early.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much.
I was gonna let you know that it is his birthday here in a few hours, so.
We already, we already announced it.
Okay.
You missed the, you missed the announcement in the party at the beginning of the regular meeting.
I apologize.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that, everyone. Thank you.
All right, number nine, request approved final cost information to authorize additional appropriation expenditure. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for the two thousand and twenty sidewalk program contract twenty G, Council Resolution one-two-three-dash-twenty. Mr. Zalinsik.
Good evening, Madam President and City Councilmembers. Thank you for saving the best for last, as we say in engineering.
Indeed.
Uh, basically, this is just a, um, housekeeping issue. We had the sidewalk repair program done last year by tunnel construction. We had the final numbers. And what boils down to, if you look to your, um, sheet, basically just finalizing numbers, we actually were under budget by about forty thousand dollars, to be honest with you. Uh, there was a little bit, uh, overage on the single lot assessments. There were actually more people that wanted work, uh, as far as that, uh, original, uh, estimate. In addition, we did go over a little bit on the, uh, tree root repairs and, uh, a little bit on the ramps, but overall, uh, we were under budget for the two thousand and twenty program. Just wanted to. Just wanted to solidify the numbers, get your approval to go ahead and close out the contract. And just, again, the authorized additional expenditure and appropriation was basically for the single lot locations and the ramps, a few, few dollars more on the ramps and the tree roots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Counsel. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Everything seems in order. I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent.
All right, any objections to placing it on consent? Seeing none, seeing no one from the audience that wishes to speak to this. We'll move on to item 10. Request extend contract with JV Contracting Incorporated. This too comes from the Engineering Division regarding the 2021 Lane Line Marking Program, Contract 21-H, at the unit prices from the 2020 contract unit prices from budgeted funds, Council Resolution 124-20. Mr. Zalinsik.
Yes, good evening. This item, basically, there's two contractors that do this type of work. PK Contracting and JV Contracting. Before, there was RS, but that got bought up by PK. So we have two contractors. Went out for bids last year. The previous years have been done by RS. When they got bought up, it was done by PK. JV Contracting got the contract last year. And in the contract, allowed for extensions if it was approved by City Council, up to three years. So we're requesting City Council, because we did get a significant savings. I think the original bid from PK was 125, and this was, was 95 from 2020. So we're looking to do, again, cost savings to the city, which they go out in the fall typically to go out, paint new pavement markings before school starts, and make sure that safety of the roads, our major roads, the local roads that we maintain, are well-kept up, and also for street crossings where we have stop bars or pedestrian locations that are identified by the police to, to ensure the safety for school crossings. So just asking for approval to extend the contract to JV Contracting for 2021, in the amount of $95,000. Be happy to answer any questions if you'd like, and appreciate your assistance in this matter.
Vice President Barr.
I'd offer approving for consent. If there's no objection, Madam President.
All right, seeing none, seeing no one from the audience. That's offered on the, on the, offered as approving on the consent agenda for February 22nd. Finally, item number 11 is request approved the proposed 2021 Sidewalk Repair Program. This too comes from the Engineering Division to include two target areas, one in Section 18 and one along Merriman Road from Schoolcraft Road to Five Mile Road, along with scattered locations throughout the city, Council Resolution 784-82.
Again, we're just going in order here for the 2021 program. We need to get the addresses to City Council in case somebody moves, sells their house, you know, unfortunately dies, that we have a track record to make sure that the house will get assessed and that at the end of the repair, the final, final cost will be taken care of at the closing. We have 557 locations for 2021 identified and looking for your approval. So we go ahead and move forward with that with the addresses that are provided. As far as our, our protocol, again, just standard issue every year. Get to City Council, then bring the unit prices for you, for approval, and then get the information out to residents to do repairs in the summertime. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. Seeing this quest gives me hope that winter might be over in the next, maybe eight weeks. So I definitely like to see this. Everything, again, seems in order. The packet looked great. I'd offer an approving for consent.
All right, are there any objections placing it on consent? Seeing none from Council, seeing none from the audience. We will place it on the consent agenda. But, Mr. Zalinsik, unfortunately for you, I think you still need to come back and see us on the 22nd. But thank you.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't miss it for the world. And Mark Terramino, I'm sure he likes to chime in sometimes, too, once in a while. So, you know, I got to make sure he's staying on his, on his toes.
That's exactly right. All right, this time we go back. If there's anyone from the audience that would like to communicate with Counsel on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to be so, calling once, calling twice. Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. And through the chair, I would just like to briefly thank former Mayor Jack Ingobretson for his kind words earlier in this evening's meeting. Mr. Mayor, many community leaders look to you as a mentor and come to you for counsel. And our community is fortunate to have you as a member of our city and for your continued service. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members. Without getting in too late, I just want to say that it's a week, a very, very tiring week in our business. But each of you, I, I don't want to say I love, but I do love all of you and all the work we do for our great city. I want to say that we were very privileged after 42 years of being featured in the Livonia Observer and the Free Press for one of three in the tri-county area of Floris in what business changes we have had to make with weddings and everyday work and funeral work as we proceed in this climate of this virus. So very honored that people came forward. And I know Rob's family's in business, in a small business as well. And us small business owners, it's very important to us to have your support and our community's support at a time when we all need it. And, you know, want to keep employing people within our community. We employ some 17 local people in our store. And I, I think it's important that people realize kind of the trials and tribulations, not only in our business, but particularly the restaurant business that Rob's family's in and others that we all know are in, in our community. And please, get out there and, once again, just support your locals, especially your mom-and-pop businesses. It's so important. And Happy Valentine's Day to everyone on our council, city, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Happy Valentine's Day from City Council to everyone. And don't forget to order your flowers. Order early, order often. Anyway, thank you, everyone. If there's nothing else, I think we are safely adjourned at 9:17. Good night, Livonia. Thank you. Thank you, Livonia TV and Information Services. Good night.